All right, thank you. Uh, next resolution is, uh, Resolution 2023 dash 32, approval of the 2022 Caneth Phase Two Water Main Replacement Program, change order 01.
Over.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have to take one down here, so.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, this is the City Council. So, we're currently, um, under contract with Lawrence &amp; Clark to do the Phase Two Caneth Water Main Replacement, so that's from Joseph Campo to Conan. Um, earlier, I guess, in January, we met with DTE Gas, and there was a concern based on the current design of doing a pipe versing, so essentially pushing, we have, there's an existing 10-inch line underneath the sidewalk, we're gonna push a new 12-inch line through that and, um, have that replacement. And then, in 2024, we were planning on replacing the 6-inch line with an 8-inch. After, um, discussions with DTE Gas and their concerns, and discussions with the DPW, we felt it was in the best interest for the city to actually install a new 12-inch line in the road of Caneth from Joseph Campo to Conan, and eventually tie over those, um, service, water service lines from the 6-inch line to the 12-inch. That'll be a second phase of this project. But, um, essentially what it all boils down to is we'll have one water main in the road versus two that are currently there. Um, it's gonna help with DPW maintenance, everything else in the long run, and essentially we'll save the city approximately $900,000 because we won't have to replace that 6-inch water main now. So, we're requesting a change order of an additional $181,912.96 to complete this work.
How long this project's gonna be?
So, we're currently, we currently started, so I gave them permission to do what we currently have budgeted and gave them a stop-off point, but, um, we're hoping to have it done in the next few months, maybe sooner, but I don't wanna things happen during construction.
It's gonna cost a little bit more to go from the 10 to the 12, but now we can scratch the, doing that other line next year.
Yeah, so we're going, instead of doing pipe versing, we're doing the directional drill method, so.
This line all, it look like a plastic or what is it?
Yeah, it's an HDP, so it's a high-density polyethylene pipe. Um, but yeah, it's like a plastic pipe, it's all fusible, fused in, so you, it's prob, I think it's sitting out there, I haven't driven past today, but I think the line is sitting out there, so it's all fused together, so they pushed that through underneath the road, um, all in one shot, and then they open it up where they need to put in gate valves and connect hydrants.
It's better for other one.
Yes. Yeah, it's, uh, right now it's the best product that we can put in there.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2332 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023 dash 33, approving the start time for the March 28th and April 11th, 2023 City Council Meeting, to be moved from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
I'll make an offer.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Can you, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you make sure everything getting done in one hour, maybe?
We try to keep light.
Can you do that with after meetings?
We're still gonna be here after.
Okay.
Just in case, bring your e-far with you.
Well, if that's gonna be on the city hall.
But I believe if that starts at 7:45, correct?
Yeah.
So, you have some time.
They have times for.
Try to come on time.
Any other discussions?
No.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2333 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023 dash 34, Code Enforcement Issuing Warning.
Offer.
Second, sir. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for him.
Yeah, I've been this city from 1995, so we used to have the warning, a long time we had a warning. So, suddenly we stopped, and residents complaining, looking for some kinds of warning, not like before, we used to have the one week. Uh, so, right now, we bring everything to the reserve room, and people need it, and, um, we are, we are for the people here. So, people want it, and we approve it, and, uh, should be okay, everything. I think if we really wanted to do it and give the warning, we can give them, and next day, or whatever time, you visit and write the ticket, so at least we can try them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is gonna be for the first offense?
Yeah.
You can give warning, warning this multiple times?
No.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. So, it says first time offense, so there is so many issues people get, I mean, so what are you counting on same criteria or different criteria? Let's say someone get ticket or warning for putting their garbage can on wrong place, but other hand, they have a.
Long grass.
Long grass, or like they have, uh, you know, bad roofing on their garage, are you, what are you looking at, how are you gonna divide those?
The roofing is not part of the, the warning.
Mr. Mayor, we, we intended administratively to do it for that offense, so, I mean, if, you know, if, so if they got one for grass, and now it's something else, it's still, as far as we concerned, a first offense.
Yup, individual, it's individual.
So, they would have to get a couple of grass, which was before it was a ten day.
Okay, so individually.
Yeah, we're, we're not saying, oh, you messed up on grass, we're gonna, oh, now it's a roof, you get it, no, they're not gonna do that.
So, do we need to, uh, change their garbage here on this, uh?
Administratively, Councilman, we're, that's what we plan on doing, so, I mean, if, if we start screwing up, I mean, please bring it back to us, but I, that's not our intent.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Well, I wanna thank my colleague, Councilman Al Samiri, um, to bring this resolution forward along with the Councilman Mahid Mahmoud and Councilman Hassan. Uh, we discussed this before, that warning may not work for the communities, you know, we have a lot of litterings, a lot of people don't take care of things, but I wanted to tell the communities that, you know, we're, we're doing it, we're not doing a favor, we, we're just wanted to make sure the city looks like clean and flourish, you know?
Sure.
But if we do this warning, and then you get this libiate, you get this opportunity, you take advantage of that, and then don't do the cleaning, we're gonna change it back. Because the city of Entram is really trashy, it's really, I do clean up my business front every weekend, and I see a lot of other places too, so please, 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 do not litter, do not throw waste out, take little bit of time to clean up. And this warning is, is just to libiate not too many tickets, you know, you get, you take away your time, you know, you have to go make an appointment with the court and take a time off, we understand, that's why we're just trying to work this out for you guys, but don't take advantage, please, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Change is hard, and it doesn't come very easily, it takes time. Uh, but I'm thankful you guys bring this resolution for the warning, a lot of people in the community coming to me, and myself also, for the couple tickets without any warning. If you, if you, if you put one in 24 hours or 48 hours, it is helpful for the people, at least they know what's going on, they can fix it. And I have two other people, they're bringing the picture also. Went bring this some, uh, garbage bags and some kind of bags, and our code enforcement people, they took the picture, give the ticket, but it is, if they're gonna warn, get them a warning, it's gonna easily clean, clean by, and they do not pay for the ticket. But this ticket means, uh, this warning means it doesn't take three, four days, give them like 24 hours or 48 hours, and it could be, they do not fix it, it's, then you can issue the ticket. Thank you very much to give me the opportunity, and I'm taking the apology. I worked, used to work a long time with the Madam Mayor, even sometime I say madam, so take my apology.
Yes, no, I don't, uh, it will be verified.
Yes, we need just make your.
Yeah, go on.
Uh, this warning, we need to know, just only one time a year. Warning for everything, snow, trash, grass, one time, we give them a chance this time, no more time, next time we give them the warning. We wanna show the people, it's not gonna use the warning, everybody, oh, you have to send me the warning, you have to send me the notice, no. This time we just work with the community, give them a notice, they're gonna be one time a year. There is, it is not by the same way, 24 hour, two days, one day, three days, it's the same thing, but we need to know, only this year, it's gonna be one time a year, one time, or the warning. We need everybody to keep it clean, we're gonna mention every meeting, everybody make it clean, make the address in the back from the, uh, from the house or from the business, make the address, make everything clean, not to be anything stuff in the backyard. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Councilman, I only bring one things here.
No, we do, we do one time a year.
No, no, not that, I'm, I'm talking about something else.
Yeah.
The city, we found is a trash city, being honest, it's a leftover city, people use it, they left it out, they all went to good, nice-looking cities. And our people, we should give them some pause for making it really nice and spending a lot of money and renovating these houses and making it livable. I mean, we can only criticize our citizens, they're not keeping it clean, they're doing their best, but we have to look at the, the way we found this city, you know, where it came from, how it, how it was before. Many, many houses, people spending so much money is unbelievable to fix this house and make it look nice. So, we giving them little opportunity, we should not criticize them, that we're giving too much. Uh, you know, we can't just, uh, say that people not giving it look nice and pretty our city. I think people doing a good job, but they have to do a little bit more, pay attention to this detailing, to the city, bring it more presentable to, uh, you know, entire community. Compared to the, our city of Entram, we always say trash, not that bad, I, I don't wanna put down our city. Our city is much better to, if you, I see, if you go to Warren or go to other cities, not, uh, I mean, I mean, if you go to the bigger city, if you go to New York, I mean, it can, compared to Entram, it is much better.
Okay, we're gonna see in next two month, how many, how many people they gonna be uh, team to make it clean in the city? If I do see nobody, nobody people to come to clean, the city is gonna be bad. We didn't need to leave the door open for a notice, they have to have it clean by use of.
All right, I think the idea is clear.
What's the timeframe for the, uh, warning?
It's not a set time.
Well, let's say somebody has long grass, they give them a warning.
Curious ordinance is.
He's had at this city.
Yeah, what, how long do they have to fix it?
It's already, city will decide though. Let's go, Mr. Mayor.
It just depends what it is, is this graffiti, we're not gonna expect them to do it the next day, you know, I mean, if it's grass, a couple days.
Yup.
I mean, I mean, realistically, the turnaround on that is not gonna be 24 hours.
It's a discretionary period, code enforcement.
They're, they're reasonable, but by the time they're able to go back and check out, and it's, it's a couple days anyway.
All right, thanks, and, and the code enforcement can use their judgment based on the, the violation. For example, there's clear negligence about something, you don't need to give a warning, if it's a huge thing, I mean, it deserves to be penalized. We're talking about minor violations, but if there are like, you know, something that, that's done on purpose or clear negligence, I think that should be, uh, person should be penalized. Um, all right, we'll call the rules then.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2334 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023 dash 35, directing city administration to explore and plan street sweeping program. I'll make an offer.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? We talked about it when we talked about. Yeah, this is, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is very essential for this, uh, city to have its street sweeping, you know, we, we do have, uh, plant, uh, trees, uh, shovs and leaves falls, you know, into the ground, and then it goes to the sewer system, so if we do not clean up, it will clog up our sewer system, so that's one way to mitigate that issue. And clean, uh, from this city of administration first, if we take a step first, then the public will see, notice that as we are doing something, we, we, we wanted to have a clean city, so that's why I think it's the best step to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council, that you realize that we have a city official and a city who should do better job, to ask them to do a better job, so before everyone was blaming our, uh, you know, residents, so we're now on the same track.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2335 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023 dash 36, approving site plan for 953831 Buffalo.
Over. Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, uh, we have Cage again from Mckenna, and I believe we also have the representatives from the actual car wash here, if you guys all wanna step up and maybe give a quick overview of your plans, projects, and our.
I need to go first?
Yeah.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Council, and Mayor. Uh, yes, so, uh, just to orient you a little bit, this is a car wash going up at Buffalo in Morawak. We do, uh, support this project, we recommend approval, um, we listed a few conditions of approval, including additional screening, uh, provided along Morawak, uh, to kinda buffer between car wash and residences. We stipulated, uh, street trees and a three-foot tall masonry wall. The street trees would be in the public right-of-way, and they would need to get some sort of permission from the Department of Public Services, so I did wanna clarify that, um, this is not just a blanket approval for getting street trees into the, into the right-of-way. But we do support the project, and if you have any questions.
Hi, my name is Alan Hall, I'm the architect with API. We're here for questions, whatever you'd like us to answer.
No, what, many business.
No, we, we, I mean, we wanted to welcome you to the new business, definitely looking forward to seeing this new project going on, that car wash been shut down for a long time. I seen it before.
Twenty years.
When are you planning on start working on it?
Uh, well, API is putting together some stuff right now, but, um, yeah, right after this approval, we're planning to get started on, uh, some of the industrial work, so doing things like war testing, finalizing engineering jobs with the city building department, so I would say probably a year turnaround, I would be open.
You're the owner?
Uh, yeah.
I have one quick question to you.
Yeah.
I'd ask the same thing to any department also. I, I saw few of those new, uh, carpets in Woodward, but they put the free vacuum for the people, for the community, my question is that, can you able to do some free vacuum for the community?
If the lot was bigger, maybe, but definitely the vacuums are paying customers, aren't they? Uh, it's free after the car wash, but it's not free without a car wash.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I have a couple suggestions for this, since I'm a business owner and, uh, independent business owner, so if you do that, I would like to see sign, a car wash sign everywhere, that you have a car wash, because that is the, like a dark area, you know, isolated from the main streets, so you wanna put a car wash sign on Conan, Joseph Campo, whole group, that you have one, and then second thing I would recommend, if you can make people membership, monthly.
Yeah, definitely have a membership.
That would, uh, help, if people thinking that I have a membership, I'll go and get a car wash through that, so that's what I do through Woodward.
Will you work discount?
Once you start making money, I'll probably ask for a discount. If he is starting, I wouldn't, that's not who I am, I, I to him, I like him to be succeed and establish the business.
We appreciate the, the support. Definitely, uh, we see an eight bird in the city, and we'll have a monthly membership, and it's, it's gonna be very community oriented.
Yeah, no worry.
We plan on doing like fundraiser events with the, with the schools, with the high schools, I went to the Enchanted High School, so I understand the value it would have for something like social body thing and things like that, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to starting.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2336 approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, next one is Resolution 2023 dash 37, Acceptance of Memorandum of Understanding with Eastern Michigan University.
Over. Second.
Mr. Mayor, so, um, EMU, as you guys know, um, does a lot with our city as far as helping with grant writing and providing us data and doing research, and has sort of tipped our hat a little bit earlier, um, they've, they've been around, um, they wanna continue to help us and, and support this, the project and continue, you know, their reach project as well, uh, but they do want a little bit of assurances that the city will continue to participate and provide the data to them. Uh, it's a very small, simple, one-page memorandum, just saying that we'll cooperate with them, and they'll continue to, to help us along, so, um, just asking you to approve it.
Uh, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2337 approved.
Thank you. All right, move to the old business, and we have Resolution 2023 dash 26, approval of contract with Max Garberino to serve as Hunter City Manager.
That's where we have a lot of problem.
I'll make an offer.
Thank you.
Second by Councilman Moheen. All right, any.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, we have a lots of back and forth with the attorney and council and, uh, Max Garberino, we have a lots of compromise done, and, um, Mr. Garberino also give up a lot of stuff, and, uh, we also do lots of stuff taken out from previous contact, and also we give him something, uh, what is as a human, we feel, uh, only the section, I have a couple of council members and few people talking about, uh, section number four, uh, no C, I see the C, they said that's the one people talking about, so it's only the mayor, but end of the line saying very clear, uh, negotiation and the council approval, no matter what mayor does, if council don't approve, it's not gonna happen. So, if, uh, my colleague, uh, some of them, and some residents also requesting with mayor, if we don't have any problem, I wanna put it there, I like to amend it, uh, put the mayor and council, and, uh, that is the one right now, after that, everything else, very clear and everything, understandable.
Right, we're just, uh, requesting the section four.
C.
Incentive, it's B, if I'm pulling up the right.
It's C, C based upon employee's.
The same thing, but maybe it's, yeah, the final one. Yeah. You guys are looking for the mayor slash. It's the same, but the C and B is, doesn't matter, but what we wanted to do, or which asking, uh, that.
Mr. Mayor, you see.
Based on upon employees.
Four, final one, four C.
Final revise.
Finally, let's go the final, this one.
So, B, C is, but it's old, S is C.
Okay, so right here, the final.
So, basically, yes.
Hold on, let's see.
Maybe you pulled up this old one too.
Four.
And then B, right here.
But it was the old version, the new version is C.
C, right.
Okay.
So, just wanted to make an amendment to this, uh, based upon employees' continued top-level performance, the mayor and council.
But they got, they have, they have to have, they got some different, if they leave, only get the.
One second. Yeah, but it's, the line it says here, any added compensation beyond, so what theirs means is saying that if it's, mayor says 20,000, anything above, then we, it comes to the council, but what we want, we wanted to have first, uh, come to the council, any.
Mayor and council will agree with that, then come to the council and.
But the line does not clear that, um, Mr. Chairman, for example, that it's any added beyond, if we just add the council, and it will, it will be fine.
Can I also agree that there is the typo, it should be A and B, not be in C under section four?
Yeah.
So, he's correct by assuming, I know he's reading the old version, but the new version there, it should be A and B, not A and C.
B and C.
Okay, so anyway, so you see that, Mr. Mayor, where is the language is that?
I see, but you wanna explain the basis on top that?
Yeah.
So, basically, I'm not really sure what the question is, right now, as of right now, the, the mayor, his discretion can give him, uh, can add, how much is it?
20.
20,000 as, at his discretion, so you're asking from what I understand, to add city council approval to that, so it's the mayor and city council.
Any amount that will be.
Well, it's only, the only amount there that they're talking about is 20, anything else would have to be a renegotiated contract, so, the only, the only thing this contract provides is approval after 20.
We understand, that's, that's, we prefer to be written, uh, mayor and council, any amount.
So, I'll, that's what I understand that you're trying to add.
Councilman, with all due respect, we, we did negotiate this in good faith, and you guys are kinda changing this last minute.
No, no, I understand that one.
We given everything that.
It still depends on performance, so how the performance go, let me explain, all the council member evaluate, and goes to the, given to mayor, mayor also might, himself evaluate, go, taking everything together, put into the HR.
How about the mayor and a subcommittee, performance subcommittee?
No, performance, all the council member have to do it, that's our way of previous practice, no subcommittee, every individual council member, who did the Michigan State uh, city manager, and after that, who did all the manager, every council member, individual performance review done, given to the mayor, six of them, including mayor, seven of them goes to the HR, and I do review with the Katrina Paul, I do review with the other two, myself, so that's the one.
Councilman, you can do the review, I'm, I'm not insinuating that, I'm just saying, for the ordinance of that raise that was built in there, just at the mayor and a subcommittee's discretion, not bringing it all the way back to council, so basically, you all would do a normal review, but the subcommittee based upon the reviews makes the determination.
Or it still has to come to the council, there's a language saying the last language, last sentence.
Well, that's above 20,000, yes, of whatever is beyond that's in the contract, absolutely has to come back.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor.
But we wanted to say that any amount, any incentives that would be given to any city manager, has to be approved by the council and mayor, it's not just the 20 or 10, it's just the whole thing has to come through the council chamber.
I, I understand that, Councilman, and my counter to that was, how about the mayor and a subcommittee rather than the whole council meeting?
So, I think, Mr. Mayor, what, what makes time to say that, instead of having a vote on the council meeting, they can discuss with the, subcommittee can discuss with the council, and come up with the final decision, let him know, instead of having a vote on the.
Come to the city council board.
Right, so, subcommittee.
I mean, I think that's what we agreed on when we met with him as a subcommittee.
And essentially, so, what, the way I see it right now, is essentially what you're doing is, even though it has a provision that you would look at the contract in two years, you're making it so that you're doing it before even, because you're trying to, so maybe a subcommittee would be the.
Okay, here's the one I have to respect, so, like a mayor and subcommittee already have decided this.
Right.
So, it's still mayor gonna do something, it's still gonna talk to the subcommittee, no question.
Right.
So, if we leave this as it is, I didn't see any major issue.
I mean, to be honest, when we talked with him, as a, there were two, two council members there, and we agreed that we will talk to each other, I'm not gonna take the decision on my own.
I know, yes.
I love that, that, the whole, everyone agreed that we will talk about it.
Great.
And, uh, we, we put the timeline when we do it.
Yes.
And, uh, I, it feels like we just gonna break our word. And it feels like we're just gonna break our word.
Okay, so here's the one.
I'm not gonna take the decision on my own, of course, I'll negotiate with all of them.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep as it is, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, same way.
Same way, so there is the respect, things was decided. So also, I.
And to, just to let you know all, it's me who called everything in the contract. We were gonna vote on it before we negotiate, renegotiate. It was me who brought these issues up, right? And I called everyone, just to be honest with you. So why now everybody doesn't trust me? You were about to vote on it without reading it.
You have to respect.
Yeah.
We have to respect, yeah.
Okay, so.
I can also add from my perspective in this, so I did a little bit of research, I think that you might, I mean, some of you know, basically, I was able to look at the city manager financials for other cities, compared to what Max has to go through, compared to what sort of similarly priced city managers in other cities. You're getting a good deal here, basically. He is so short-staffed that he has to personally, and some of the staff as well with him, have to carry the load that, I mean, really, he should have double the staff he has, but they're so understaffed, he has to carry some of that load. So he's basically carrying so many hats and you're paying him one salary. So I think it's a good deal and I think you guys did a great job negotiating as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, you need to, please, it says here, this word, it's really bothering people. Just say the mayor and the subcommittee. Yes, and it's all discretion, see you know, the word is all discretion, it's only saying that it's mayor's discretion, it's changed up to twenty thousand, he can approve after hitting twenty, it will come to the council.
Okay.
And the word wasn't there. So you had thought that I would give him more than, what, twenty thousand, right? No, it's not that. Yeah, you do, you didn't even read the contract, I'm the one.
So.
It's not, don't get offended. I'm not getting offended, I'm not gonna take the decision on my own, but now you show this trust. From this established trust. Just put the mayor and the subcommittee.
Mr. Chair.
Because on that meeting, we agreed on stuff, and that's why people need to show up when we need them to negotiate and put some time to work, you know, rather than raising issues in the last minute. So you can put the mayor and the. We can amend this one and we can move on, this is all we.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend this resolution.
So motion to amend.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution of Section Four, you calling B, the mayor and subcommittee.
That's it.
Are we correcting the typo?
Yeah, so that's corrected the typo.
Thank you.
So, maybe it's a second though.
Question B to mayor and subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Being honest, what Mr. Attorney said, even though when Mr. Max asked for another twenty thousand, this is, I mean, we did some research and he did some research compared to other people that are getting paid in the other cities and everything else. But thank you, Max, you know, he was able to negotiate when we pressuring him, that we don't want to give you that much because of our city condition and, you know, financial situation. So he took the one twenty, even though some people was saying that one twenty was advertising on our job posting, but, you know, because of the dollar, what is called the, market goes down, the market, so he was trying to see, negotiate a little bit more money than what, you know, was advertised, there is nothing behind the scene, and some people were criticizing, I think we should all come up to the agreement that, you know, he, he did a little love sacrifice and, you know, we have to give something to get something. So we both side, we the win-win situation for the city of Hamtramck, and I think the mayor has proven, taking this amount that we was pressuring to, because we don't want to give more than one twenty. You know, so.
And just to make it clear for the public, because I don't think they re-read the contract, there's some comments that I heard, they still commenting on the one forty, one thirty-nine thousand, so it is already adjusted. And not only that, but many sections, including, for example, the vacation from six weeks, we decreased it to four weeks and he, he accepted that. We decreased so many things, we took those amounts off the contract, increasing car allowances and.
The gas rate.
So many things that we pressured him and he accepted it. And we also put back the one hundred twenty thousand, was subject to given raise within the timeline. And we agreed that day that the three people that were there, that we will discuss it shortly. So that, that's it, I think everything is, it looks fine. And everybody put his input, all the city council members.
So what are you trying to use the dollar inflation? So the time the job was posted and the time they negotiate dollar inflation, you know, that's what Max was asking, a little bit more money than what was advertised, but we negotiated to the exact amount what has been advertised, so.
He's right, so maybe approve it now before these banks start going down and the inflation goes up.
So, I'd like to suspend the law, like if we don't have any more discussion, I don't want to talk again more than good. So, everybody, thank you, we did very good job, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And Mr. Muhyid Mahmoud, you did the line by line and communicated them, Mr. Mayor and Asmari was there, I really appreciate, so I'd like to call the board.
Alright.
We're voting on the amendment.
Yes.
Councilman Moussa?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Asmari?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Amendment to Resolution 2326, changing Section Four B to mayor and subcommittee approved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion amended as it is, what is in the floor.
Yes. What do you mean?
I have to do again.
You said the whole contract.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
You amended the resolution, now you're voting on it.
Yeah, the wording will just throw me off.
It's okay, it's already been seconded.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just to vote on this, yeah.
No discussion, just go.
No discussion.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Asmari?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chaudry?
Yes.
Councilman Moussa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Amendment, amended Resolution 2326 approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, I think we're done, we move to the report. Don't have much to say. I, two events that I went to last week where I had an interview with the Uzi media and I talked about some issues with Hamtramck or some, you know, updates. It was about an hour interview, we talked about Hamtramck. And then on Friday, the seventeenth, we had the basketball game in Dearborn, between Hamtramck and Dearborn. Unfortunately, we lost the game, but we, we raised fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty thousand dollars to be given to the victims of the earthquake in Turkey and Syria. So that was a good turnout, a very good game, very, it was fun, I was there with the city manager and deputy city manager and mayor of Dearborn, and it was fun. They still celebrate their victory until today. Last year, we won, but we didn't even celebrate, so, so I just teased Mayor Hamud today and I said, maybe he's gonna announce a local holiday there. Like the Saudi king did with Argentina.
It is good, Hamtramck is very big, powerful.
Mr. Mayor, you notice our Facebook page, there's an update on it now.
Alright, so that was my report, not much, I just want to say Ramadan Kareem to all those who fast and celebrate in advance. It will start next Thursday. And hopefully, it goes well and everyone just enjoy the month of Ramadan. Now we move to the mayor's court and report.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Our city is moving right now a right direction. The budget also has better than what I ever seen last thirteen, sixteen years. So, and we need a little bit more improvement is coming. And council is working together, that's the good thing. And basically, right now, my job, I don't have my replacement. So, because of, I have to do three jobs right now, that's why I cannot stay full-time all day to finish the council meeting, I really apologize. As soon as my replacement in the place, then I can stay full council time. So we have a today closing item, closed session. I agree with my council members, I trust whatever decision that they take, I'm with them. So I really apologize, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Attorney and Council, I have to go now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Two more minutes, Mr. Mayor, for him, we're getting down.
No.
We have a closed session today?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move to the city council.
That was my life space too, when I told that, I was like, there's also a closed session.
Welcome to council. City council report, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, did you say that Ramadan starts next Thursday?
Yes, yes.
Thursday, yeah, Thursday, it's gonna be Thursday.
Day after tomorrow.
You said next Thursday.
No, no.
Day after tomorrow.
After tomorrow. I'll make it clear. After tomorrow. It's Thursday, yeah. It's Thursday, not.
But now, like, I was so confused, I'm like checking what I said.
No, no.
It's this week.
This week.
Next, that means after tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow night, tomorrow night, everybody is not gonna be, that's it, from tomorrow night. Alright, so, okay, report for the city council. I am something, sir? Yeah, go ahead. No, 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 I don't, I don't. I just, oh, trying to, are you? Well, I just want to say this, the happy Ramadan Kareem, and the month of Ramadan is as a month of holy month and which symbolizes dedication, reflection, and discipline. And I hope that, you know, everyone's stay healthy and keep the fasting, you know, it's a requirement if you are Muslim. And I just want to clear one thing, Mr. Mayor said, that when this meeting took place, I, I don't make it precise, because if I, when I didn't show up this meeting for the subcommittee meeting, it would violate the open act meeting. When I saw Mohammed Hassan, Mohammed Asmari, and Muhyid Mahmut showed up, I didn't show up. That's why I didn't come to the subcommittee meeting on the third floor, because there was an open act violation. Mohammed Hassan didn't come. But he said he's there, he was there when I committed. I'm very much of a person that may communicate well with the phones, with emails and everything. So it was that reason I didn't show up. But I have read it, and the last council meeting, when the city, MCM contract, I was the one saying it's on tablet, because I saw something was not right. So besides that, thank you so much and looking forward to working with everyone. It's just, we need to, I can't be taking things personally. If I don't, if I see something that is not right, I'm just gonna speak up. I'm gonna say it like it is, so then we can all be on the same page. And I wanted to work with everyone and continue. Some of us sometimes wanted to instigate with one another, to play manipulation game, that's not why, because I can see that. But that's, that's not how this council will work. And going forward to flourish the city, implement the city. We want to work together, we want to do something for the city of Hamtramck, the city of our, we have to trust each other and continue to work together. Thank you and happy Ramadan Kareem. Yeah, just to clarify, my, my point was that we were two days away from voting on the contract in the previous meeting, and I'm the one who called people. So I didn't want national, but I have to say, I'm the one who called people and disagreed with the contract, nobody ready at that time. Just to make, so you don't think that I would just give away things without consulting you, okay? No, I believe I called you, Mayor, I talked to you on the phone in, so I called you first and then discussed this, and then you say, yes, we're gonna have. So anyway, I do respect you that you have, but. So, just use, alright, go, anyone else?
Yes. Okay, go ahead, please. Yes, I'd like to say Ramadan Barak, Ramadan Kareem. We need everybody try, make the fasting, if they want to be healthy, make a week, couple of days for a non-Muslim, make the fasting try, it's gonna be healthy, good. And I'd like Abu Moussa congratulations, and like, thank you for everyone show up today. And I'd like some spec for one people, if they, if they have a schedule for meeting, they have to have to spec the time. They have to have spec the time. When we have a schedule, we need to be the person, please, tomorrow at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, they have to spec the time. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, just thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you, everyone. I think it's a great meeting, sometimes we're criticizing each other, but that's not, it's a productive ways. So, that's all make a council, and welcome, Mr. Abu Moussa. I think after Mayor Protem, you have the most experience in this council, in this room, so I hope your experience will bring in a much more evidence to the city to progress in proper direction. And Ramadan Kareem to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Mayor, to give me the opportunity, thank you for here, to give me the opportunity to serve this community. And after two terms, it's my third term, I'm running, I'm serving this community. Again, I'm very, very thankful to the community and our mayor and council. I have a little concern about our former councilwoman, Amanda Jankowsky. I hope she feel better. I hope her medical condition is better. She's very energetic, she's a hard-working woman. And thankful to her also, she gave me the opportunity to work for the community and people. And I hope we work together, move the city right track. And I was agree with you, some of those audience, especially council and mayor approved city manager, Max Garberino. I approve with you, I have a trust with you, and I know Max Garberino, he is one of our own. There isn't a lot of things you guys take away from him, still he's agree. I know how much he loves this community and how much he loves the city. Thank you, Mr. Garberino, and do best for this community, best for our city. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, Councilman Abu Moussa. You already served two terms, you don't look that old. Thank you. Alright.
Good talk.
Next, city manager report.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thanks to our staff today for being here for the budget hearings. We made really great progress today. We got the heaviest part of it done. DPS, police, and fire, those are by far the largest parts. All that's left are some of the ancillary ones. In, I think, one more short meeting probably can wrap it all up, so, and then we can have the actual budget hearing and go from there, so. That's all I have, other than closed session.
Can I suggest something, and it's just long shot? Can we do a budget meeting on the six o'clock days that we have the city council and do it at a five, at five o'clock, maybe? Instead of having it an additional Tuesday outside of just the city council?
That's what Mayor and Council like.
So maybe next Tuesday, right before the six o'clock meeting, we can meet at five o'clock for the rest of the budget meeting?
Oh, no, it's, yeah, it's a prayer time too, for us, or.
Who's us? Speak for yourself.
Yeah, prayer time. Can I, can I just make a suggestion? Is the next meeting the regular council?
Next meeting is this Tuesday, next Tuesday.
So let's meet at five thirty?
Next Tuesday?
Yeah, so that way, you know, Asser would.
The regular meeting starts at six, it only goes a half hour.
And then that.
No, the next meeting starts at six, Amir.
Not really anything there. So I think for the next meeting, I would suggest that we can just ask you if you have any questions on, on the budget. And we just answer the questions instead of, you know, because these are very small departments, so there's hardly any cost in there, other than the salary cost and stuff. So, yeah, we can just.
We're certainly at your disposal, Mayor, Council, on the budget. I mean, we can go in as depth as you want, or we can go as little as questions as you need, so. The budget is balanced, the big bulk of it we got through today. Our controller seems to think a half an hour, we can cruise through the rest of it, but that's dependent upon your pleasure, so.
That's fine with me. If you guys want to pray, we can pray in this room too, if it's, if it's not time.
If you give me a time, we'll get it posted in front of Ramona Time.
So next Tuesday, five thirty, sounds good?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to start closed session? Oh, I'm sorry, of course, I apologize, Lynn. Are we ready for public comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Lynn, how dare I?
Lynn won't let us live.
You get five extra minutes for that. But thank God I'm not the mayor and now you don't have the authority.
Hello, hello again, mayor and council. Regarding resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-five, with the citation warnings, I think it'll be important to clarify with the community what the timeline is, and there was discussion in the meeting about whether it's per type of offense, or Councilman Al-Samiri mentions just one warning per year. So I think communicating ahead of time how those warnings will work